I, Donna Victoria, do affirm.
I, Donna Victoria, do affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Councilmember at Ward Six.
Execute the office of Councilmember Ward Six.
According to the constitutional laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the laws of the city of Tacoma Park.
And the laws of the city of Tacoma Park.
Okay, I now call this meeting order. Let's, please, call a roll.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Snapper. Councilmember Victoria.
Here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
And I believe Councilmember Snapper is out of town. Any council comments? Councilmember Wright.
First, I want to say a couple of big thank yous. A thank you to all the many members of the Independence Day Committee, including our own Councilmember Siemens. I thought it was an amazing day, so thanks for that. Thank you to the city staff. I know behind the scenes, they did many things to pull off such a wonderful day, and often when nothing goes wrong, we forget to say thank you for all the work behind the scenes. And then lastly, I want to say thank you to Councilmember Robinson for organizing the conference bike, having the idea of getting the conference bike and getting it here to Tacoma Park and inviting me to ride on it. It was a fabulous experience, so thank you, Mr. Robinson. Just wanted to mention, I had a good time in MML. There were some informative sessions. In particular, I found the traffic calming session that I went to quite interesting. I know not the sexiest topic, but there were some very knowledgeable traffic engineers there and learned some very interesting things about roundabouts in particular. And then lastly, just wanted to encourage people to go to enjoy Roscoe's, the pizza restaurant. They now have their liquor license. It's my anniversary, my seventh year, seven-year wedding anniversary today, so I snuck in a quick dinner with my wife at Roscoe's and took advantage of their new liquor license and had just one, mojito, which was very tasty. And they also now are introducing some fabulous desserts, so I had a great bread pudding with white chocolate melted over it, so I encourage others to partake there. Thanks.
Yeah, Councilmember Robinson.
Yes, thanks to the Independence Day organizers and doers. It was great. I just wanted, there was a public hearing scheduled for tonight for a speed bump removal in my ward on Poplar. I just want to acknowledge that it's not going to take place tonight and that we are going to review the efforts so far on Poplar to remove that speed bump. And there's been some confusion about our portions of our code which deal with removal of speed bumps. There's a 2002 cutoff point before which you can't remove a speed bump unless you replace it with something else. So I'm looking forward to working on, with my colleagues, to clarify the language and the intent of that. And I want to thank people in my ward who have worked on that, on that issue and who will continue to work on clarifying and normalizing, I guess is the word, the speed, the traffic calming measures that we have at our disposal. We're a long ways from now, I think, from where we were a few years back as regards speed bumps and traffic calming. Our staff has been proactive in getting traffic calming measures in place, have reached out to a number of neighborhoods. So it's not just speed bumps anymore. It's now speed bumps and narrowing of streets and cars slowing down for a variety of reasons and painting on the streets. We're much more aware of how calming traffic on one street affects neighboring streets in other neighborhoods. So I think that we need to, as we look through our code, take all those things into consideration and find a way, a process where neighbors can feel well represented, still have the power to put things in or take things out, but also respect and regard people in other neighborhoods and all the various ways of working on speed of cars. That's all.
I'd just make a comment or two. I also appreciated the efforts of the Independence Day Committee and city staff and everybody who put time and effort into working on the Fourth of July festivities. I did want to note that I had the interesting experience of riding in the parade in a 1903 Oldsmobile, and it gave me a new appreciation for people who rode in cars in those days who have something in common with probably about a third of the people who ride on Metro, because you're always facing backwards. It was an interesting perspective on the parade. I also wanted to note that there was one session in particular that I got fair amount out of at the Maryland Municipal League Conference, and I don't remember the exact title, but it was, the subject was "How to Deal with Fiscal Difficulties as We Go Forward." And the, one of the things that I got out of it that I was surprised at, maybe I shouldn't have been, was that a number of the things that the speakers talked about, that municipalities should be doing to be in a position to be fiscally responsible going forward, the city either has already done or is in the process of doing, and that made me feel better than I expected to feel in that session. I was prepared to be depressed by the session and actually felt pretty good. There were a number of things like having a strategic plan that is part of your budget discussion, just a number of things like that, where they were saying that that was how to be prepared to deal with any fiscal difficulties that might be coming in the future. It was also interesting to get together with the large municipalities in the state. Tacoma Park is considered large. I believe that that group is now a gang of 14, and Tacoma Park is the 14th largest municipality in the state. It was interesting that somebody was saying that the mean size of a municipality in Maryland is 1,500 people. And so you can see how of the 157 municipalities and special taxing districts, that there are a fair number of pretty small ones. So it was, all in all, it was a good conference, and I think a lot of people got a lot out of it. Any final chance for any council comments? At this point, we're scheduled to adopt minutes for meetings for April 13th, 20th, and 23rd. Do I hear motion to approve?
Second.
You've been moving seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And if you have any minor editorial items, if you can get those to the clerk. And I'll just point out a couple of scheduling updates. We don't have any additional agenda items. I wanted to point out that next Monday night, July 13th, we don't actually have a council meeting. We have a city council workshop that's scheduled for 7:30, and we're going to be off-site. We're going to be meeting with the community and those people who are interested in learning more about the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan, the Montgomery County version of it, and that's going to be at Tijuana's Cafe Two at 949 University Boulevard, at University and Carroll Avenue. So that will be a chance for a little, a little less formal way for people to come and get information and ask questions and for the council to talk with anybody who's interested about that plan. And then the following week, July 20th, we will have a resolution providing comments on the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Sector Plan, the Montgomery County version. Additional items on the 20th, we have tentatively scheduled a resolution commenting on the boundary redistricting issue for the schools, and we are scheduled tentatively to award a contract for renovation of this room. And we've also scheduled a work session item to discuss the request for ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. And then our last meeting before we go on break in August is July 27th. So after tonight, we have two additional meetings in July before we go on break. Now's the time in our meeting where we encourage public comments, so if anybody would like to come to the podium and speak, and if you can identify yourselves, and please try and keep your comments to three minutes.
Yeah, my name's Pat Lovler, 7620 Maple Avenue, Ward Four, Tacoma Park, Maryland. I also wanted to thank the city for such a great time on the Fourth of July, and it was so great to see all the people coming out to see us in the parade and to see what Tacoma Park was, because it's great to have the parade representing everything Tacoma Park has to offer. You know, like the schools, the kids, the musical bands, the steel drum, and our city council members, and I even had the peace symbol out there on the Tacoma Park Parade, "Peace Delicat Tacoma Park." And everybody was clapping and cheering and high-fiving as we went by. But I'd like to ask anybody who had seen us out there, who's watching maybe tonight, all you people who are clapping, I'd like to see you people coming out to the demonstrations and the actions, because there are a lot of things that we need to be doing. We need to stop the violence, to stop the gangs and the drugs, and also to give our kids something good to look up to, give them a good role model. And everybody in Tacoma Park has the same ability as I have to do that. And so I'd like to see everybody coming out to our demonstrations. Also, we had a great demonstration in front of the Supreme Court on the 28th, the 29th, 30th, and the first and the second, which called "Starving for Justice." We had a demonstration against the death penalty. And also, Virginia's going to be killing a man, Mr. Powell, on the 14th in their prison down near Jared, Virginia. So I'd like to ask everybody to remember, we have to get rid of the death penalty, and we can do it. As a city of activists, we need to set an example for our kids, our neighborhoods, and our country. We can do it. And also, when we have these different events in our city, like our city events, like the Folk Festival, Jazz Festival, Street Festival, parades and whatever, I'd like to see if the city, when they put their advertisementself for that, to please stress to the families and the parents to keep an eye on their children, for God's sakes. There's been times where I've seen kids as young as two and three out there with no parents. The parents go out to the car or wherever and leave the kid standing there, thinking just because it's Tacoma Park, it's safe, because a kid can be snatched in a moment, and it can be a lifelong tragedy for them and for everybody involved. I don't want to ever turn the news on and hear that a kid in our city has been abducted, raped, killed, or buried in a shallow grave. I don't want to see that in my city or any other city. And we can, I'm going to ask the city council, if you people can possibly stress to the kids and the parents not to leave their children alone at any time, ever. Please. And also, the kids in school, if you want to have something to do on a summer vacation, something you want to tell your friends about, come out to city council. There's a lot of empty seats here, a lot of empty seats over here, and you have a chance to learn about how your city government works, a chance to speak up about something that's going on in your city, and a chance to become an activist, maybe join the Young Activist Club. But please, I want to ask the parents to bring their kids out here and let them sit down here in the city council. It's better than standing on a street corner where the gangs are. You don't need the gangs and the drugs. You need education, and you need to be able to help our city government. It's one thing to elect them, but we need to come down here and help them do their job. Thanks for letting me share. Keep the peace.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Terry Siemens. I live at 149 Ritchie Avenue, and I'm standing at this podium tonight as president of the Tacoma Park Independence Day Committee. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the many people who helped to put together the day's activities. We had the parade, the barbecue, and the fireworks event in the evening. I don't have really the opportunity to thank each individual separately, but I do want to take special note of a couple of people who were really instrumental in preparing and organizing the day's activities. Mary Ann Miles and Mike Melish, her husband, worked very hard on preparing the parade. I think everyone saw the great benefit of what they put together, and Mary Ann also worked very hard on many other parts of the day's activities. I'd also like to thank Steve Francis for his large commitment to the community and his hosting of the barbecue that was a bridge event between the parade and the fireworks event. Also, thank Matt Corley for organizing the fireworks, and Susie Young for her work on the many vendors and organizing the many vendors throughout the day's activities. And lastly, I mentioned Doug Ziegler, son of Bell Ziegler, who was just instrumental in helping to, all the committee members, to remember all those little pieces that Bell always remembered to, that have to be done to make the day's events successful. And Doug was originally hesitant to join our organizing, and if he hadn't have been involved, we wouldn't have been able to accomplish what we did. City staff was also very helpful, Bowers, I thank you for that. Especially the police were very helpful with the changing. We extended the parade, and that changed the traffic patterns. I know they had some difficulties with that, but I want to especially note Lieutenant Bowers for his leadership and his can-do attitude, the way that he addressed our requests for the change and was able to pull it off. Public Works, Troy Finkel and Herb in Public Works were very helpful in all the activities throughout the day, both, you know, the parade, the barbecue, and the fireworks event. We again had some issues come up that they were able to knock down, so that the crowd didn't really realize some of the backstage issues that were happening. Jesse Carpenter, we thank you for your continued assistance with some of the administrative functions. Appreciate that. And of course, Lonnie Moffett with the cable TV. I think that appeared to go without a hitch this year, and we thank you, and also the sound system out there. I think, as I said, I think things went very smoothly this year, and it's because of the dedicated work and the hard work and many hours that people put in in preparing that. There were a few things that we have to correct for next year. I encourage the community members who attended the day's events to contact me at 301-565-0190 or an email, tjseamens, S-E-A-M-E-N-S, at AOL dot com with any ideas or any problems they noticed for correction next year. You know, I also encourage people to join us. It's not just volunteering to do work, it's really volunteering to have fun and to end up feeling very good about the accomplishments. We only meet about 12 times a year, so it's not a lot of meeting commitments. There's some, you know, backroom work that has to be done, things you can do from your lounge chair or going out and talking in the community, but again, contact me if you'd like to volunteer for next year's activities. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager Matthews, Erwin Mack, Tacoma Langley Crossroads Executive Director. I came with one idea in mind, but another one came up. I'll speak to that in a moment. I want to thank you first for a choice you made in giving Ward Six a good council member who will be joining us in our board meeting on Thursday for the first time, and we will look forward to working with her for her term of office. I change hats now, and assume that most of you, if not all of you, know that Mr. Leggett appointed me to be the chairman of the County Pedestrian Traffic Safety Advisory Committee for a two-year term. I still have a year and a half to go. And something that Councilmember Robinson said just struck me, and I wasn't planning on speaking of it, speed bumps are on our agenda for Thursday night. County-wide consideration. There are lots of challenges with speed bumps. Notice I chose that word very carefully. I've been told by the Department of Transportation in the county that they're slowly changing the signs, taking out the speed humps because of the connotation that some college kids have taken, and stealing the signs. So they're no longer putting up speed humps, they're putting up speed bumps regardless of what the thing looks like. I thought that might be of interest to you, but if you have any council that you would like us to consider, this is not a one-night thing. It'll be a subcommittee that we're looking into this as to what to recommend to the county executive and the county council for the future of speed bumps throughout the county. We're not allowed to consider any single intersection as whatever's good for the entire county.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Kaye Daniels Cohen. I live at 19 Sherman Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. And I'm here also with huge Independence Day acknowledgements. I'm here as a new member of the Tacoma Park Independence Day Committee, and I want to thank all of you, the city of Tacoma Park, for giving me and the committee the opportunity to be in service and participate in the planning and execution of such a wonderful citywide function. I especially want to acknowledge Terry Siemens, Jesse Carpenter, Mary Ann Miles, Doug Ziegler, the Recreation Department, Public Works Department, the cable TV staff, who, Jesse helped me with who they were today, the Police Department for jobs over and above the call. I would also like to acknowledge all the citizens who donated money, things, and also purchased raffle tickets, because without their input, the celebration would not be possible. I apologize if I've left anyone out. Terry had a whole lot better handle on all the people than I. He did a great job there. I want to acknowledge the parents and the kids of Sherman Avenue, Hancock Avenue, Sheridan Avenues, my husband, Jack Cohen, and especially Lysia Monfort, Recreation Department Administrative Assistant, for getting a bunch of kids together to carry signs, decorate bikes, ride scooters, and march in the parade, representing the Recreation Department and committee, and in honor of Bell Ziegler, and to raise our collective green consciousness, all done on Lysia's volunteer time. Volunteer time, and I think maybe the city doesn't realize that, the whole city doesn't realize that the whole celebration is put together on volunteer time and the collective monies. Certainly, some monies are given by the city of Tacoma Park, but a lot of the monies are raised by the committee, and especially with the raffle tickets. But volunteer time brings me to the astounding volunteer committee, who are able to leap tall buildings with a single bound and perform minor and major miracles. This committee was up against it this year with huge hues to fill, shoo-hoo, huge shoes to fill after 40 years. It was the maiden voyage of a totally new ship. The committee is way too large to name each person for you, but you and the community know who they all are. What a wonderful result showed up for the people of Tacoma Park. It was such a fun time for me to work with some incredibly conscientious volunteers. This Independence Day celebration would not be possible without the input and work of the city and its volunteers. It was quite moving to be a part of such a huge working together and teamwork honoring Bell Ziegler. I was especially moved, touched, and inspired by the Trinidad Tobago Band, who led in the parade, who are playing Caribbean music and have it over their band's name in loving memory of Bell Ding Dong Bell Ziegler. They wrote it exactly how they would have phonetically said it. Let's keep up the great work. It's an honor to be, reside in a city with such fantastic pride, energy, and involvement. Thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for all that you do for the city.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, council members, city officials. My name is Steve Davies. I live at 6717 Poplar Avenue. I'm here again to talk about gas-powered leaf blowers on behalf of myself and about 30 other city residents who support phasing out the use of these machines. I've given to you a packet with a proposed ordinance and some background materials, some new background material. Regulation of gas-powered leaf blowers is well within the ambit of city authority. Dozens of municipalities and counties across the U.S. have restricted the use of leaf blowers to some degree, even to the point of banning them completely, usually in residential areas. I know of no lawsuit that has successfully overturned any of those ordinances. That's probably because leaf blowers can be considered a nuisance. Boy, are they, says Pat. Yes, I would agree. Indeed, the city's own regulations define nuisance as "whatever is dangerous to life or health, whatever renders air or food or other drink unwholesome or unfit for the use of man, any odor or exhalations which are offensive to the inhabitants or dangerous to the public health." I think there's plenty of evidence to show that leaf blower emissions are dangerous to public health, because they consist of large quantities of nitrogen oxides and volatile organic compounds which, together, react with sunlight to create ground-level ozone, a proven health threat. As I've mentioned in the past, the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments is ranked lawn and garden equipment number two in production of VOCs at about 80 tons per day. Less than cars, trucks, and buses, but ahead of surface coatings. The lawn and garden category also was fourth in production of nitrogen oxides at about 10 tons per day. A new report issued by 13 federal agencies on the impacts of climate change says that by 2050, assuming constant pollutant emissions, red ozone alert days, when the air is unhealthy for everyone, in the 50 largest cities in the eastern U.S. are projected to increase 68 percent due to warming alone. Such conditions would challenge the ability, said the report, of communities to meet health-based air quality standards, such as those in the Clean Air Act. Those standards have tightened or are scheduled for tightening, being scheduled for tightening. Ozone standard, I think, is 75.075 parts per million. EPA has just proposed lowering the standard for nitrogen oxides. In your packet, you'll find some data from a monitoring station at Tacoma Elementary School in the district with ozone and NOx, sorry, ozone and NOx levels. I think it will show that, well, at least according to my averaging and calculations, that the levels were above, you know, the federal limit at approximately 80.080 parts per million. They also skirted the NOx line. Anyway, I'll wrap up very quickly. I just wanted to say, you're going to be addressing environmental issues later in this meeting. I think a way to approach environmental issues is just approach them, assess them, and then take action. And I think there's a lot of evidence to show that we need to take some type of action to improve the air quality. Tacoma Park. Tacoma Park, this is one of the few things we can actually do, a few things we have authority to do. So I just want you to, I hope you will read this and look forward to the work session that is coming up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, then we'll move along to our next item, which is the City Managers' comments.
Just a few items this evening. Late this afternoon, the Police Department issued an advisory concerning two wanted fugitives that were noted by our Police Department in the area of Slager Creek Parkway. They were wanted for homicide and attempted homicide in Prince George's County, and one of the subjects was captured. The other barricaded himself in an apartment on Aspen Avenue, so if you do hear about a lot of activity that was taking place late this afternoon in that location, that would be the reason why. Just before I came downstairs, Captain Corsi called and let me know that the individual had peacefully removed himself from the apartment, and he is in custody now. So pleased to report that. I also wanted to let the council know, as you may recall, the bid opening for the auditorium was originally scheduled for tomorrow. At the request of some of the bidders, we did extend it for a few days, so the bid opening will actually take place Friday morning. We are still on schedule to basically have the council act on retaining a contractor before you go on recess. The other item I just wanted to note is, at your places at the dais this evening was some cost estimates for the public works facility renovation, which will be discussed in just a little while. It is basically entitled Downey and Scott, and I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware this was distributed since it'll be talked about in just a little bit. And that's it.
Any questions? Thank you. We will now move to the presentation on Montgomery County's Foster Care Program, and we have with us Ms. Jean Booth, Supervisor of the County's Foster and Adoptive Parent Services. Welcome.
Can I have some foster parents? Some wonderful Tacoma Park foster parents, even better.
Wonderful. Welcome.
And as the packets are being handed out, I want to thank you again for having me again this year. It's really, really helpful to get out and be able to speak to people and talk about what a wonderful job we do on behalf of the children all over the county. As many of you know, Child Welfare Services continues to receive hundreds of calls each day from the community alleging concerns about children's safety. And as a result of those calls, we go out and investigate, and when necessary, we remove children from their biological parents' homes temporarily, most times, and place them with foster parents. We're fortunate here that we have almost 300 fabulous foster parents in Montgomery County, but we always need more. One of our goals is to maintain connections for our kids, so we like to have foster parents that live in the communities where children need to maintain their connections to their schools and their friends. So we look towards cities and towns to try to recruit specifically from their communities so that we can keep kids in their schools and keep them in their after-school activities and things like that. So I'm glad to be here today to talk to you about an opportunity to try to recruit some more Tacoma Park foster parents. I don't know, I think that we have several wonderful Tacoma Park foster parents. Two are here. We have Sharon Van De Veer and Ms. Arnetta Ramsey as well. I'm going to ask them to give you their perceptions of what it's been like working with us on behalf of the children, what some of their, the lessons they've learned, and some of the value they've received from working with these children. Again, in the packet that you have, I left a brochure that talks about what the requirements are to become a foster parent. You also have some business cards that you can hand out that have our recruiting line on that, so people can call. We'll call them back within 24 hours. We also have a little white sheet brochure that talks about other ways people can help because a lot of times people are concerned that they don't have the time to commit to 24 hours a day of caring for kids, but there are lots of other ways you can help support the children of Montgomery County. So you have that sheet as well. And just some general information about child welfare and what we can and can't do, what the laws are regarding abuse and neglect, and how we get involved and when we'll get involved, and how we'll protect the caller's confidentiality and things like that. You have that on the green sheet as well. I'm here, I can answer any questions you might have, but I'll turn the floor over to our foster parents.
Okay. I'm Sharon Van De Veer, and I'm in Ward Two, and Colleen Clay is actually my representative, and I believe she's a foster parent too, right?
I was a foster parent for six years, and I've had eight kids, and I've had a couple of kids in kinship care.
Well, I'm a relatively new foster parent. I've only been doing it for a year, and I've had two placements so far. I had two little boys, age three and four, for four and a half months, and then I had two girls, age 19 months and eight years old, for four and a half weeks, who just left about a week ago. And I want to let people know that you can do it if you work full-time. I and my husband both work full-time, and we have a young daughter ourselves, a three-year-old. And so it requires a little bit of legwork to get childcare arrangements set up, but it's definitely doable, and my daughter has really been enjoying having extra kids around. She's very social. And it's just been really rewarding to me that both of the placements that we've had have been really, just really good kids. I mean, it's amazing how well kids adapt when they have some structure and regularity, and they're very resilient. And my personal mission as a foster parent is to try to give kids some stability. So we do emergency foster care and other types of care, but my goal is to be there for the kids from the minute they need us, as long as they need us. So it's really rewarding to feel like I've been able to do that so far in my limited time. So if anyone has any questions, or if anyone ever wants to contact me, I'm definitely willing to talk to anybody in the community. I'm sure they can get my information from...
Absolutely. We have a website also, that's montgomerycountymd.gov/kidsneedyou, and you can contact me directly through that, and we can connect you to any foster parents if you have any questions.
My name is Arnetta Ramsey. I have been a foster parent a little over two years, and so far I've had 15 placements, but most of them have been short-term. The longest maybe was like 10, a little over 10 months. I've dealt with some pre-teens and some teenagers, and more recently, teen mothers. And I think the greatest need, I find that most of the teens, they do need a lot of counseling because they have come from, most of them have come from very stressful environments. Not all of them have the same problems in the home, but usually neglect or abuse are some of the primary problems. And with the teen mothers, I have a teen, well, I have a 20-year-old mother now, but I did have a teen mother who recently left June the 1st, and I find that naturally they're not really prepared to be mothers, and they need more counseling and more classes to help them, you know, to understand the responsibilities of taking care of children in a way they are still having grown up themselves. So it's very hard, and they don't have the patience that a more mature mother would have. And I find that, you know, just like common things like we would do, like holding the bottle for infant, I find that sometimes they prop up the bottles, or the person I have now, they started, which I only had for a few days, but they started at three months allowing the child, trying to train the child to hold the bottle, you know, at three months because they wanted that freedom, you know, and so they don't have the maturity, and they really need a lot of intense help. And I was wondering if they, you know, they need more classes and to understand that they need to, you know, that the child is very vulnerable, especially an infant, and that they really need to, you know, to do more and to understand more as to the care, you know, the child, and also for a future for themselves. Some of them are not really interested in getting education so that they can have a good job, you know, and be able to take care of their children, so that's another, you know, problem. Some of them may not want to go to school, you know, and some of them are about to age out, and they really, you know, don't have a future plan for themselves and for the child. And so that is where the greatest need I find, you know.
You have a question? Okay, I just wanted to add also that in addition to fostering, we're very successful, and we're very happy to be able to reunite children with their parents, but we also have a need for adoptive parents as well. It's the same licensing process. You can call 240-777-1664 to learn about that. There are chances for adoption. A lot of people think that because we work with foster children that we always reunify them, but there are times when, for whatever reason, biological parents aren't able to resolve their issues, and you need some adoptive homes as well, so just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for coming here tonight. I first became aware of the great work that you and the foster parents are doing in Montgomery County through attending the annual celebration that the Council of Governments throws, celebrating foster care in the region. Every year, they invite foster parents and elected officials to a dinner where they give awards to foster parents, selecting one from each jurisdiction around the region. First time I went and I heard some of the stories of the foster parents, I was like, wow, that's incredible, the dedication that you parents have to the children. It was amazing stories we heard about, and then I went back the second year, and there were more parents, and I said, wow, they must have really skimmed the cream of the crop, you know, there can't be that many foster parents doing so many fantastic things. And I'm talking about foster parents who have had hundreds of foster children or have been foster parents for many, many decades, you know, 30, 40, 50 years. And then year after year, I'd go to that with the mayor and some of the other council members and hear more stories. And so I said, well, this is great, you know, the problem solved. We have all the foster parents out there dedicated to taking care of the kids that don't have the stable home life that they need. But then I talked with many different agency representatives that are there from not only Montgomery County but other places in the region, and I find that there's not nearly enough foster parents, that that's one of the reasons that some of the parents are caring for so many kids. Then I find out that in Tacoma Park, we don't, we have more kids who need foster parents than we have people stepping to the plate to help them. So that was why the mayor and I worked together to ask you to come here tonight, is to reach out to the community to help the kids.
Yeah, and we appreciate the efforts that both of you have made and want to encourage other parents in Tacoma Park to recognize that this is a wonderful opportunity that they can take to really help kids who really need that help. And as Council Member Siemens said, we heard some wonderful stories from people. I think there was one person who was recognized this year, I believe from Arlington County, who had fostered 300 children. And there was another woman from the District of Columbia a year or two ago who had fostered children and sent 21 of them to college. And when you hear stories like that, you recognize the great satisfaction and also the tremendous amount of work and effort and money sometimes that it takes to do this, and that, of course, there's money that agencies pay foster parents, but I recognize that a lot of people go way beyond that reimbursement and put their, not only their wallets, but their heart and soul into helping these children who so desperately need it, and wanting to make sure that we could publicize to Tacoma Park and to the rest of Montgomery County as well that there's this great need and that people need to contact your office, and if they need to, talk to wonderful folks like you who can share the experience that they've had and make sure that people realize that there's this vast need. Councilman McCollough.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Talked for a long time about my own foster care experiences, but I definitely enjoyed the time I spent in foster care, and I'm so happy that you folks are able to share your home and your life and resources with children who need it. It's very nice. When I was in foster care, they had a couple other things we haven't talked about tonight, and I wondered if maybe you could touch on that a little bit. We had parents who did short-term care, and then we had parents who did longer-term care, but we also had folks who did respite care, which was essentially, you know, a day off or a weekend off or sometimes a week off for the foster parents so that they could have a little bit of break time and downtime. And we occasionally then would have someone who would take the kids for a weekend, and they were also trained as foster parents, but it was a very finite period of time, and it's another way that people could volunteer, and I don't know if Maryland does that, but... And then the other thing, I know I put a notice out on the listserv about four months ago, we were looking for more folks to do some of the court-appointed advocate and other sort of friend to the foster kid. You know, one of the things that I found was most important in working in the foster care system, and I worked, teenagers was what we did, but especially when the kids were getting ready to emancipate out of the system, was to develop strong peer networks for them. And so even though frequently the teenagers might change foster homes every year, we really encouraged them to maintain relationships with the foster parents that they had previously and with other kids in the system and with teachers and start to build a strong peer network. And for some of those kids who had a single person who was their advocate through the process, they changed homes, but they had the same, they had, they called them CASA workers in California, they had the same CASA worker that would roll through the system with them and, you know, take them out for pizza and movies and things at least once a month, but, you know, sometimes more, but just maintain a connection and be that connectivity threat. And so I think for some people who maybe couldn't do it all the time, or even can't have kids in their house, you know, maybe they have a smaller place or for other reasons they don't qualify, or because of their living situation or something, they could still do the, some of these other activities, particularly being a CASA worker. We had some college kids who, you know, they lived in the dorm, so obviously they weren't going to be doing respite, but they signed up to be CASA workers and were very successful.
There are actually four different types of care that you can do while working with Child Welfare Services, one being emergency care, which is very short-term. It could be up one day to 30 days. Traditional foster care, which can be anywhere up to a year, sometimes longer. Respite care, which you're referring to, which is exactly what you described, it being allowing foster parents to take a break if they want to spend time with their biological children, or if they need to go to a movie with their spouse or their partner. This allows them a chance to do that, knowing that the children that they're caring for are safe and being cared for well. That's another way. And then there's the adoptive care. So those are the four types of care that we provide for children. The court-appointed special advocates, the CASA program that you refer to, is not connected to child welfare, but it is a wonderful program. The court system appoints CASAs to children that are in foster care to kind of become their advocates at school, at their, sometimes at their medical appointments, sometimes at, well, always at the court hearings, but they're very wonderful. It's a wonderful program, and unfortunately, I don't have that information with me, but I'm sure you could Google.
I sent it out on the Ward Two letters at least a few months ago.
Actually, I was previously a court-appointed special advocate for about a year, so I had two cases through that program. So if anyone's interested in that experience, I can talk about that as well. But I definitely found the primary role is to learn as much as you can from everyone who's involved in the child's network so that you can write a letter to the judge that he takes into account at the hearings. And so you present all the evidence that you're aware of, and then make a recommendation about what you would think would be in the best interest of the child. And I found that the judge took it very seriously and would sometimes ask questions to get further input.
Those are two people that children will never forget, are their foster parents and their CASA. I mean, they may have a number of social workers because of the way the system is designed, but their CASA they will always remember, and the foster parents, they live with them 24 hours a day, they never forget them, so it's very valuable. they live with them twenty-four hours a day. They never forget them, so it's very valuable.
Well, I just came back from a trip to San Francisco and while I was out there, found what happened to a sibling set, actually the first sibling set that I had, three, three kids, and found them on MySpace, which is very interesting.
Find everybody.
Well, I'm still missing one kid of the, of eight. I don't know what happened to her, but, but it's, it's nice to know that they're all thriving and well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We really appreciate your coming and we will spread the word and spread the information and hope that more people volunteer.
Thanks again. It was good seeing you.
Barb, I wonder if there's any way we could include some of this information in the city newsletter and on the city website?
I was just thinking the same thing. I'll send an email to Jenny Myers, the newsletter editor, and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thanks. And our second presentation of the evening is presentation of the proposed Public Works Facility Master Plan for renovation by Bignell Watkins Hasser. Welcome. And I guess Darryl, you can introduce them?
Well, we were just debating whether I should introduce them or whether they would just jump right in. I've had the pleasure of working with Amy and Tom in this beginning phase of taking a look at our facility and listening to our needs and also meeting with the community and taking input from that. So I'm pleased that we're to this point. I think they've developed a really good understanding of the situation we have of the public works facility. And I know through their work from other, other projects that they've got a great handle on, on how to get us to where we, where we need to go, both for the staff and the equipment and the needs of the residents. So, no further ado, I'll just turn it over to them to go through the package of information that you've been given.
Okay. My name is Tom Bunting. I'm with Bignell Watkins Hasser. And this is Amy Small. She's my colleague. She's the project architect for this project. We began our task of working on a master plan for the public works facility a couple of months ago. The facility itself was constructed in the late fifties. It's almost fifty years old. And we began by meeting with Darryl and her staff and getting input from them on their needs, what things were working well, what things weren't working. And we made an assessment of all the buildings on the site. If you can turn to, in your packet, there's a sketch that shows the existing site plan. It's labeled SKA. It's an eleven-by-seventeen sheet that looks like this.
Which page is that?
It's the first of the eleven-by-seventeen, looks like a fold-out.
We didn't get eleven-by-seventeen. We got eighteen-by-eleven.
It is next to the last page on this agenda, I am.
I'm sorry. Next to the last page. What you see there is a site plan of the site as it exists today. Moving from Oswego Avenue on the left side, on the west, there's an existing administration building and an engineering and maintenance building. Those buildings are in fairly decent shape with the exception of the mechanical systems. They're masonry construction with wood-framed roofs. The maintenance building on the north edge of the site currently houses locker rooms and truck maintenance bays and the right-of-way department. The users expressed a desire for a centralized locker facility that was more up-to-date than their current fifty-year-old facility. And they wanted the ability to service larger vehicles in the maintenance bays. The building on the right, called the equipment building, bay building, is adjacent to the salt dome. And the southeastern corner of that building has suffered severe damage from salt being applied or stored immediately adjacent to the concrete block. It's deteriorated for most of that north bays and a portion of the east bays. Perhaps the building in most need of repair is the building in the center, which is called the mechanic sanitation building on your plan. That building houses the mechanic storage, the tires, the auto parts. And on the, the north side, I'm sorry, the south side, houses the trash trucks. Currently, the trash trucks that the city uses are too large to fit completely into that garage bay. So from about the cab forward on the trucks is, is exposed to the weather. And that building has suffered some severe traffic-related injuries. The columns are severely bent and the roof framing is in danger of collapse if things aren't done. Oh, and then the other area of concern that we looked at was the driveway that goes to Ritchie Avenue on the right-hand side of the page. That, it's a, that's a hill, basically. And on that hill currently, the police impound cars and leave them there. And that's, there's an entrance to the facility onto Ritchie Avenue, which we've been asked to look at improving since the, the trash trucks, when they go out from the facility, they scrape the bottom there. So we've looked at regrading that, that hill onto Ritchie Avenue. And now Amy will talk about what we're proposing for the facility.
I guess you turn to the next page, which is the proposed site plan that we've been working on. As Tom mentioned, we'd like to work on regrading that Ritchie Avenue entrance so that trucks can use that as their primary entrance to the site. That was a big concern with the neighborhood group that we met with. So we'd like to work on that. Moving over to the other side, Oswego Avenue side, the staff wanted a better entrance to this building. Right now, there's a gate that's blocking the front entrance. So we'd like to propose relocating the visitor parking area and also the garden nursery area and creating a nicer entrance there. We'd like to renovate the administration building and the engineer and garden building and, and add on to those and connect those two buildings together with updated offices, conference rooms, some storage. And on the, on the north end of that building there, provide new locker rooms for the staff working in the yard. Moving over to the mechanic building, we'd like to extend the mechanic bays out so that the large vehicles are, they're able to work on those in the mechanic bays. And also relocate the mechanic storage to that building. So all, everything the mechanics need are right there. We'd like to move around some of the offices for the right-of-way and the storage. Right now, they don't have quite enough space to work on some of the larger products. They pull things out in the yard to work, which would present a problem in the winter. So we'd like to give them a larger working space. On the equipment bay building, as Tom said, there's some structural damage. We'd like to demolish the, the parts that are damaged and replace that and provide a new roof for that building. And the central building, that, the sanitation mechanic building that's so severely damaged, we propose just demolishing that and starting over. We spoke with Darryl and there was interest in a truck washing bay for, you know, trucks and different equipment on-site. So that central building would contain the truck washing bay, some storage, parking bays for the sanitation trucks that are large enough to hold everything, and additional parking bays for equipment on-site. You see on the west side that there's some parking behind that building. We'd like to have that covered as well so that we can extend the life of some of the equipment. There is also material storage covered there. And a location for the storage of the lead box is on-site and the vacuums. Right now, they're just pushed up against a building, so they would have a designated storage area. Lastly, just new automated gates to increase the security on-site. We've also addressed sustainability as we looked into this. I've gone through the LEED check card, which you can see right before that first plan. We've gone through some of the points and looked at this and seen what we think would be the most reasonable points for this project. And we think that this project could be LEED certified. And there's, we looked at it under LEED for new construction. There also is a multiple-building campus system in which we're proposing that the administration building go, go for certification. Under the multiple-building system, the whole site would be addressed. So issues like stormwater and heat island effect, that would be addressed throughout the site. But the administration building would be the only one that would actually receive the certification. But we would be looking at the entire site.
Including the salt dome?
Yes.
We passed up this evening a cost estimate prepared by Downey and Scott. And I guess what needs to happen next is sort of a evaluation of where we want to spend the money that's allotted for this project. And I guess, Darryl, can we speak to that more readily than us?
Yeah, I just got the information today myself, so I haven't fully had the opportunity to absorb it. What we were asking the architects for is to basically develop a master plan. I think we all were fairly well aware that the $2 million would not solve all the issues that we had at the public works facility or meet all the needs. But we wanted to come up with, you know, take this opportunity to come up with a plan that would cover every aspect of the buildings and the needs and then develop a strategy for reaching that. We know where we, we are this year with a $2 million construction budget and whatever else we, what the amount and the timing for the future phases would be something that would be a discussion of the council and the city manager as we move forward. So I don't know where you want to go with this discussion. We could get into some real nitty-gritty specifics. I can elaborate on some of the, the design elements that I think, you know, really, you know, sort of paint them out for you if there's any ambiguity about what problems we're solving or what we're trying to do.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think the only comments I would need from you, Darryl, are any concerns that you have that you see in the design. And I would want you to call those to our attention. Beyond that, I think we can probably deal offline with any other things.
I'm very comfortable with the design that's, that's in front of you this evening. It's, it's not the first one. We've worked through a few iterations of this as we've gone along. And the staff and supervisors at the public works department have been able to, you know, take a look at some initial plans. And, and I think we've, we've seen some tweaking and changing of things as a result of sort of the people who are actually using the spaces saying, hey, it really would make more sense, you know, and we need a bathroom there. And, you know, my view of gee, we need, you know, one set of locker rooms, everybody, one happy family. And the division saying, oh, no, 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 we need some separate spaces for our stuff, but we would, we would like the shower facility and the uniform storage all in one place. So, you know, basically getting, getting some definitions down and some better understanding from the users. So what you see in front of you has been a well thought and hashed out, yeah.
Okay, good. Yeah, and I trust, you know, I don't have to go into the level of detail. I trust that you are, you know, making sure to take care of your people and the, and the business you do. I do have, of course, concerns from our history just to make sure that the mulch pile and the salt dome have been historic environmental disaster areas along with the, the recycling for the oil and, and other chemicals. And I want to make sure that that has been addressed and that we will be, if not LEED certified, at least environmentally moral in the way we handle it.
Well, I think the solutions to at least two of those problems have already been well underway with council funding several years ago. With the salt dome, we've, we've basically solved that problem completely. Our salt is all contained within the salt storage facility. We do regular maintenance and housekeeping measures that keep it contained. It's totally waterproof, totally tight. So the issue of the salt is, is no longer existing. The building that was damaged by salt just, it, it didn't relate to the existing salt dome. That, that damage, I think when I first started working here twenty years ago is when they were storing salt in that last bay. It was a plywood, you know, enclosure that they dumped the salt in and then would access it. And the salt hasn't been there for at least eighteen years. But the damage of the salt, which wasn't evident twenty years ago, has continued to work its way through the bricks over time. So what you see now, if you look around the backside of the side of that building, is just, you know, the cinder blocks themselves deteriorating from the salt contamination, if you will, over time. So the source of that was removed, you know, almost two decades ago, but the damage has continued to, to take place. With the oil containment, we've worked with the state to get a new tank. We've taken care of all the site testing, soil testing and cleanup around the area. So that was done last year. And, and again, the site is, is taken care of in terms of any potential contamination. And we've instituted good housekeeping measures for oil containment within the site. The one remaining thing that we do need to do there is simply put a larger rooftop over it to make sure we're not getting rain. What we find now is that we're getting water in the concrete enclosure for the oil tank, which isn't a problem. We have absorbent mats in there that deal with absorbing the oil. And they leave the water as clean water so we can pump it out or scoop it out and put the water in the ground. It doesn't have the oil in it anymore. So those areas have been addressed. The biggest concern that remains right now with the mulch pile isn't directly addressed in this plan, but we have had a concurrent process going on with a pollution prevention plan of the whole facility that's proposing some stormwater and drainage mitigation measures that would address the runoff. Runoff is really the issue we have with the mulch pile. And I guess it would be the case anywhere it's located, but certainly in the area it is, you know, adjacent to a hillside, you're going to have runoff and it's going to go down into Sago Creek. So we've got a proposal and a plan underway for creating a drainage basin, sand filtration and treatment of the runoff.
Is that part of this plan or is that separate?
No, it's not part of this plan. Yeah.
And as you know, that, you know, this is located in a residential neighborhood that residents are my constituents. So I'm most concerned with kind of how good a neighborhood we are with the, with the community around it. And I'm really glad to see that you've addressed the concerns with the ramp. You know, the desire from the neighborhood is that that be the main entrance for vehicular traffic to the yard. It's one thing to have residences going to public works and using the Oswego Avenue entrance, but it's quite something else to have city vehicles, especially the trash trucks, the large trucks and the number of police vehicles that are going to that yard on a regular basis. And so you're comfortable that the ramp can accommodate the, the long overhang on the back of those trucks, which I guess has been the biggest problem.
We're actually regrading it so that the, the portion immediately adjacent to Ritchie Avenue will be at a four percent grade, which is the issue right now. It's, it's much steeper than that. And what happens is the front of the truck scrapes on the ground when the truck.
Yeah, and I think also part of the problem is with the hump in the, the road, combined with the steepness of the grade, makes for a bad transition. Okay, that, I, as far as the neighborhood's concerned, that is a mandatory item to be resolved. And then, you know, we were at the Maryland Municipal League Convention last week and we listened to Bill Strickland. I don't know if you know him, but he has a youth facility in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And he talked about how some of the lower-income residents and the youth that he brings into his facility, that he's found that by expecting the most from them, you kind of get the most. And get the most. And he talked about, you know, not putting bars on the window even though he's in a bad neighborhood, but actually putting in artwork and things in the facility to provide a world-class facility for the people that you want to grow up to be world-class. And that's maybe an over dramatization on my part, but I'm concerned and seeing leaf box and vacuum storage area right next to the apartment building next door that's home to residents who are many struggling right now to do better. And I don't think that putting storage, these storage boxes next to their home is going to give the right image for the neighborhood that's going to help people progress and get ahead. I'm not asking for a solution tonight, but I'd like to ask that we revisit that location and think what might be better to put next to a residence than a storage area.
I think the intention with that was to have it screened with vegetation.
Other questions, comments?
One other point that was, hasn't been addressed yet is this plan also calls for the relocation of our fuel pumps and our fuel tanks, which was something we were not aware of when we first pursued it. We didn't have the replacement of our fuel tanks on the list of our future needs, but it was strongly advised to us by the mechanical engineering firm that reviewed our facility that the pump, not the pumps, but the tanks themselves, which were installed in 1986, and are no longer the type that would be installed. They're steel with fiberglass coating. And these days it would be two layers of fiberglass, if I understand it, for a fuel tank. So they're strongly recommending that we, as long as we're going through the process of renovating the facility, we include the tanks in that. And then, you know, once you take a look at the traffic flows and things around the facility, the relocation of the fuel tanks, fuel pumps, particularly in light of extending the equipment base, begins to make sense. So you'll see them relocated on the plan.
Just before I call on Councilmember Wright, my sense from reading through the material in the packet was that essentially it's a 50-year-old facility and the electrical, plumbing, mechanical, all of those systems have either reached the end of their useful life or reached it a while ago. And that essentially with this project, there's some structures that can be kept, but essentially a lot of the guts just need to be replaced as whole systems. That we've reached that point where all that just needs to be done. And there's no point in trying to keep some of it and patch it, that that can end up being more expensive and that you just bite the bullet and do the project and end up with something that is good for a fairly long time, maybe another 50 years. Councilmember Wright?
Yeah, I wondered if you could talk about, I know that you did the score sheet and it's LEED certified, but if you could talk about, are there particular green features that you guys are thinking about? Green roofs or solar panels or anything like that? That would be what I would consider standout green features. They may not, or things like, you know, improved weather insulation may be as good, but they may not be as sexy or make the home statement. So I'm curious about...
Well, one of the things that we were considering was rainwater harvesting to collect rainwater to be used in the truck service bay. Other stand, there's just a lot of just simple things that we're looking at doing. Improving the efficiency of the HVAC system is a huge one. Exploring the way daylight and views work in the administration building, orientation of the building itself. It has a southern exposure that we can exploit for day lighting and...
Possible solar water heating for locker rooms or for the truck washing bays, using that, recycled content and materials in the building, high-efficiency plumbing fixtures.
I don't think our estimator has included a green roof, but that potential certainly exists because the roofs are a very low slope and are candidates for that type of roof.
And then just to follow up on Terry's question about trucks being able to go in and out of Ritchie. It sounds like the grading problem is solved, but this may be a question for Darryl as much as you do. Do we see any other thing that would prevent us from using that as the main entrance and exit for the heavy vehicles?
Any other reason why it isn't...
We couldn't, you know, why we could not?
No, no, it's just to some degree habit, to some degree comfort level. People don't like driving up or down a hill. You know, you either ride your brakes or have to hit the gas. It's easier to go where things are level. But there, it's, you know, that's basically the issue that restricts it now. There's just the slope, that's a problem.
And then, one of the thoughts that I thought we talked about at some point is the entrance to Oswego, I couldn't remember, I think, do we own the gravel lot that's used as...
Yeah, we have a triangle over on the other side that's kind of used for parking.
So I wondered, you could create sort of a, which I think would be big enough still for trucks to come down as a second option if they had to, but a bend around into the facility so that the mulch pile and the oil facility that Terry cited, and also there's the corn silo there could be screened over time, like if you planted evergreen trees that grew. So I was curious if we'd looked at that possibility also. I know that would add some cost to it, but I think would be a big improvement for the neighbors that live with the facility right next to there.
I think that was explored to any great degree. One issue we obviously have is we have such a tight footprint and there's no place for employees to park, other than there unless they're on the street, which is again a further encroachment into the community. So we've established that side lot as our parking area. And if that, any of that were to be lost to turn around or anything else, it would be difficult to have parking for the 32 employees that work at that facility.
I just wonder if we could, I know a lot of times when architects, if they sit down and look at the space, they can figure out ways to accomplish the parking and the curvature so you could get kind of the both benefits. So I wonder if we could at least look at that. Just had a quick question about the fuel tanks. Are we sure that it makes sense to continue to provide our own fuel? Is this going to be a very costly and significant process to replace the tanks?
I can't recall. I know I saw spelled out in there the cost of the fuel tanks. In and of themselves, like $125,000 to replace the tanks. I don't know if pricing was there for the pumps. We replaced the pumps fairly recently, so I would hope that they could be just simply relocated and we wouldn't have to make that investment again. We get fuel at a significantly reduced cost based on purchasing cooperatively through council of governments. So if we were to fuel at retail stations, we would have a much higher fuel cost citywide. There would also be the issue of convenience and the 24/7 nature of the police department and some of the aspects of our work during snow and things like that, when commercial operations simply wouldn't be open, we would still need the ability to fuel our equipment. So I think overall for emergency management response and convenience, it makes sense to keep the fueling facility available. Weather could be located somewhere else other than Public Works. I mean, I guess that would be an option to explore. I don't know where that spot would be, but, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would just, I think most gas stations are open, gas stations in the area open 24 hours. And you might be able to negotiate a preferential pricing if you gave a contract to a lone gas station. I hear the convenience thing and the dot in the extreme emergency.
It hasn't been something I've explored. The cost differential is almost a dollar a gallon. It ranges from 50 cents to a dollar a gallon, so it's pretty significantly reduced.
Thanks.
I had, did you...
Yeah, whatever.
Go ahead.
Oh, just one other point. We also wouldn't have the ability to do biodiesel, which we currently do, because there's no commercial facilities that are currently offering that.
Councilmember Victoria?
Is police impound still going to be on the Public Works site?
No, there's been less and less of that over time. They do have an evidence bay that they use, that's within our facility. That's that third bay, and that was been sort of under conversion from our use to their use over the past several years. In talking to the police chief about this issue in the past, they are now using off-site areas for police impound, so that's less of a...
So you've communicated with the chief and he's satisfied with, great. And can somebody talk a little more about the truck washing bay and what's going to happen with the water coming off of that? I imagine it's going to be a sizable water usage.
I can tell you what we currently do now, which is just we have a power washer and they park right in front of the bays and we have ladders and whatnot and they brush it and they wash the trucks. All the water collects on our yard and then flows down and used to flow down eventually to Seiko Creek. We installed a filtration system that now filters and captures sediment and oils and hydrocarbons and gasoline, so that's no longer leaving the site. The truck washing bay would be connected to an oil-water separator that's currently located outside the shop. It would enable us to enclose and contain the washing operation so we'd be making less of a mess in the yard, as it were, it'd be contained to one location, make the treatment of that water happen in a more finite, contained area. And then it could be connected to the sanitation system, sewage system for the water that was just, you know, detergent.
Okay, so you're still going to use the oil-water separator and then use basically the filtration system you've already implemented?
There are systems that you can get that for car washes and truck washes that actually collect the water and then it's filtered and then actually recycled.
Reused, yeah, reclamation, okay.
Yeah, I think we heard a little bit about that when we had the presentation about the car wash in New Hampshire. I had two questions. One was the, at the Maryland Municipal League Conference, there was a booth with information from the Public Works Department and Buie about their recently completed Public Works facility and a lot of the green features that theirs had. And they indicated that they were able to fund a number of things with grants. And I didn't know if we had explored that possibility, if we needed to...
We haven't explored that possibility yet. There are state grants through NDA that we could potentially apply for and access once we had plans in place and price tags in place for doing it. I visited Buie's facility. It's just their parks facility. It's their park maintenance facility. One should be so lucky. It's about twice the size of our entire operation for one of their divisions. It's definitely the Taj Mahal and buildings, $5 million construction. 1 million of it was from grants. And they've got all kinds of things within that facility. It was designed as kind of a demo show. They've got all different types of lights. Each floor has a different array of lights. They've got straw bale walls and, you know, solar and hot water, you know, solar hot water and just about anything you can imagine. They've tested it out within that facility.
Yeah, it seemed pretty impressive from what I could see. So I hope that anything that we think that we can do to head in the direction of grant funding for any of these pieces would be wonderful because the dollar figures on the estimate here come to almost 3.5 million and we've set aside 2 million. Is there, is there anything that you can tell us at this point about the breakout of a particular piece or phasing or any way to kind of make sense of thinking about pushing toward a doubling of what we potentially thought we were going to spend? Anybody?
I know we exchanged some emails with Greg about that. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to think about staging or phasing. I don't yet know the components of any of the particular, I don't know if the pricing has been established so that we can say, oh, to do the admin engineering building is X and to do the front parking lot is B and so... We could probably get that information together and present it as kind of a menu of cost options. Clearly, there's some things that are going to be connected. If we demo the central sanitation parking building, which is probably object number one on the designers and architects and engineers advice list, we would need to come up with parking and other places for the equipment to be stored.
Yeah, because it'll be helpful for us when you come back with more information to understand the potential trade-offs and the priorities and if there is something that needs to be cut or has to be cut, what direction we go. And if we decide that we have to do it all or do most of it, understanding the reasons for that so that we can figure out the best way to proceed. Councilmember Robinson?
Do you have a goal on the amount of energy reduction you'd like to see in a percentage kind of?
The LEED scorecard does.
Yeah, the LEED scorecard, I think we're...
And also what that would, that would represent dollar, from a dollar figure, over a year's time? Is there any payback?
It looks like we're targeting, was it 20%? 18%. And that's based on the Ashray Energy numbers for...
So 18% reduction in energy use, new overall?
What do you spend on energy right now?
No, I don't have the number in my head. I can get that information to you. My guess is, there's such inefficiency in the way the buildings operate now, particularly heating and cooling wise. We have, you know, window units that are mounted in the wall. They're not on any type of control, so they get left on. They run all day when they're really needed, only for a certain period of the day.
It's concrete and so forth, yeah.
It's an uninsulated cinder block wall. If we were to replace those, which is part of the plan anytime the building is getting addressed, and have a heat pump or rooftop unit or whatever type of unit that would provide heating and cooling in a centralized way with a centralized control system that you can schedule in time, that in and of itself is going to shave enormous amount of electricity costs, which is our biggest...
When you come back, remind us what the electricity costs and other energy costs for the entire Public Works structure are?
I know when we sat down and met before, it was kind of the number two. I mean, obviously this municipal complex is the number one user and the Public Works facility is the number two.
I don't remember offhand. We did go over it. I don't remember offhand either. But what does 20% of that represent? And is 20% as aggressive as you can get? And if there's, if you're thinking of a green roof, what would that, I mean, that cools a building down considerably. How much would it cool it? Is it significant or not?
Our roofs are white now, so we don't have much of that. I mean, we'll certainly, you know, any roof system will improve it somewhat, but we're not going to see it drastically.
I guess I'd like to see like a Chinese menu, you know, we could spend this much more and it would save us this amount over time. Is there a payback time? Okay?
Yeah, so any sense of return on investment on pieces would be very helpful.
Okay. Councilmember Wright? Just to follow up on that, I guess I would push even further. I like what Councilmember Robinson's proposing because I sort of feel like, what are the options? What are the costs? I would push even as far as to say, could we make a completely carbon-neutral facility so that it's with a combination of solar, efficiency, geothermal? Is there a way so that the facility in its everyday operation, not that cars and trucks that go in and out of it, I understand that's a different issue, but the facility itself, could we get to the point where it would basically be a carbon net or neutral facility? I think that would be, I think, you know, we've talked about this in the past, Tacoma Park wants to be, and in the past has been an environmental leader. But I think in some ways we've fallen behind the times and this seems like an opportunity where we're really redoing a whole facility. where we're really redoing a whole facility, where we could again take a leadership role. I realize that might cost something, but again, I think with constituents and taxpayers, if you're explaining to them what they're paying for and what they're getting and what it is, uh, I think they're much more willing to pay for it, um, so.
I'd, I'd like to see that option, if it's possible.
There's no more questions? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And we will now take a break and come back for our special session items, since there's been a request to pull, uh, the consent agenda item B, which means we don't have a consent agenda, so therefore we'll consider each of those in turn and then have our work session discussion after the break. And we will now take up the orphan resolution-
Orphan project.
-that got left all alone on the consent agenda, authorizing the FY-10 program open space allocation. Would somebody like to move the resolution?
Move the ordinance for resolution.
Is that... Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Is there any discussion about this resolution?
We...
Councilmember Robinson.
We move it to Park and Planning? We transmit the program to Mark, Park and Planning? I guess I'm a little unclear on what that means.
We, we, we get our POS funds through the county?
Mm-hmm.
Therefore, it submits to them and they submit on behalf of us as a pass-through?
Okay, it's, uh, the last one says, "Further resolve, city managers directed to transmit the, the program to MNCPSC."
That's how it works.
Okay.
And the object of this is to, uh, allocate it for, where do you go, Executive Park Project and Community Center Artatorium renovation, because we're getting so little this year that we couldn't come up with some other new use because there's too little money. We, we used to get, I want to say a hundred and twenty thousand?
Yeah, it's usually been probably right around a hundred thousand or more. There was one year, I think, preceding the gubernatorial election, where you may recall, we got about four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
But this year only slightly more than twenty-one thousand. So is there any public comment on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And we'll move to the second item, which is a single reading ordinance authorizing purchase of an automated license plate reader scanning device for the Police Department. And you're here to answer questions?
Good evening, yes, sir.
Okay. Um, Councilmember who, Siemens asked the point?
Yes, sir. I, uh, in our earlier discussions with Captain Corsi and Chief Rucucci, uh, we had gone over the policy that was being implemented to control the use and dissemination of data from the, uh, the license plate scanners. And I was suggesting that, uh, tonight that we include verbiage in the ordinance to make it clear that, uh, as that policy is considered for change, that the City Council is included in the approval procedure. Specifically, what I'm suggesting is we had one last whereas that says, "And whereas the Police Department has a written policy controlling the operation of license plate scanners and the use, retention, and dissemination of collected data." And then adding a second therefore, which says, "And therefore, City Council will approve changes to the city's policy for license plate scanners prior to implementation of any future changes." And then probably any future policy changes.
Any questions, issues, problems with that additional language?
I have none. Uh, I thought that we had discussed that before and we're, we're amenable to that.
Okay.
I will pass this down to the city clerk.
And so would you like to move that?
I'd like to move it, move it with those changes.
Okay, is there a second? Moved by Councilmember Siemens, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Is there a council comment on the single reading ordinance?
I would just say thank you to Councilmember Siemens for, uh, adding those things in, which I think put in writing, things that we verbally all agreed to, um, in a previous conversation.
Is there any public comment on the single reading ordinance? Seeing none, it's a single reading ordinance. Will a clerk please hold it over?
Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Silver, Councilmember Victoria?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We'll, thank you.
Aye.
Uh, we will now go to-
It breaks it, says.
Go to our, uh, final item, which is a work session discussion of how to approach environmental issues and implementation of the strategic plan. Who would like to discuss?
I'd like to suggest that, uh, Councilmember Robinson talk about, uh, some of what he had learned at, uh, the ICLI conference, uh, so that we get a better idea and think about how we can implement that here in Tacoma Park.
Okay. Um, different places have done different things and, for different reasons. Uh, the best, the things that seem to have worked best in the limited, um, examples I saw were, um, were group efforts with a lot of communication amongst folks and a clear goal in mind. As, as, as kind of a, a clear and not too complicated goal. In Chattanooga, it was, let's clean up the river. Um, in, um, Babylon, New York, it was, uh, let's get the housing stock more efficient. Um, there are also, there are also some good tools out there that ICLI put forward, put on the table. Electronic tools, web-based tools, um, for tracking, uh, use and savings, energy savings. Um, there, there was the concept of energy efficiency block grants. Um, uh, they're all, all matter of, of approaches. And I was enthused by seeing all the different approaches. And I was, I've been frustrated, um, by our interaction with the Committee on the Environment over time, because they've, um, recommended far more than we've been able to pull off. And I don't know if it's been a staging, an issue of staging, or an issue of, um, prioritization, or an issue of tackling certain things that, uh, seem like good ideas, but we could never, um, never quite, um, grab hold of them. I don't know if that's fair to say, but that, that's my impression. And I've only been on the council for a year and a half, so what do I know? But, um, we did put a lot of, a lot of things in our strategic plan. Um, and I, what I'd like to see is a, um, a broader approach, uh, to, to tackling those things in the strategic plan. I've, um, recently I went to a, a meeting of a group called Transition Towns, uh, which is, uh, folks trying to envision where we'll be in ten or twenty years on a general basis. Um, they're, they're taking a kind of a dire approach, assuming that we're past peak oil and past peak resource and, uh, and they, they even talked about what skills would they bring to, to the table in a far simpler, I guess not quite simpler, but, uh, a, an environment where we have far less in the way of resources and, uh, to work with. So that seemed like a, an interesting addition to the, uh, to the, um, to breadth, the range of, of things that we can do. Um, I'm open to anything. I, I think, I feel like there's su- support for some broader approach on how to, how to, how to go about this, and I, I hope we can talk about it. But, um, and I don't know how we can work best with, uh, the Committee on the Environment to use what they have to offer in the best possible way. I think that they're open to, to change. So with those general comments, I'll just turn it over.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And I thank you, Dan, for, uh, you know, going to the conference and, and bringing back the information. And it was kind of a, I felt a new energy when you, when you came back, uh, on the environmental, uh, programs in Tacoma Park. You know, I've really been impressed over the years with the work that the Committee on the Environment has done and kind of their enthusiasm. Uh, been disappointing to see that the committee has not remained at full strength, uh, through recent years, but I, uh, I think they put a lot of different, uh, ideas on the table. Um, I, I kind of share your frustration, uh, with where we are today. Um, and I don't think it has to do with the Committee on the Environment, but I think that the, uh, the city has fallen behind in environmental initiatives from the leadership role that we had, uh, fifteen years ago as a, uh, environmentally progressive community that was implementing leading-edge, uh, programs such as recycling and, and, uh, and some of the other, uh, the tree ordinance and some of the other things that we've done. Um, so that's why I was really excited when you came back and heard, uh, that other communities are doing some things, uh, that maybe we can learn from them and regain our leadership position. Uh, I would suggest, and I, I was the one that suggested that, uh, when we talked about this before, that maybe we need to rethink, uh, how we approach, uh, in the environmental programs. And, um, I suggested suspending the Committee on the Environment, uh, for two reasons. One is, uh, that we have, although there have been a lot of items, uh, brought forward, we haven't really implemented a lot of new things, uh, recently environmentally. And the second thing is that they've struggled to, uh, have full membership. And that maybe if we were to address the, uh, strategic plan, the environmental portion of the strategic plan in a more comprehensive way, uh, we could attract more community members to, uh, participate in the process and come back with a, uh, rec- with recommendations to this council on how we progress from here forward. And I would expect that would say not only, uh, what environmental initiatives we should consider, but also what form the community should interact with the council in, uh, addressing those initiatives. So, um, my proposal is that we do suspend the Committee on the Environment, uh, and that, um, I think last, uh, last time when you talked about this, Dan, when you came back from ICLI, you talked about, you know, possibly a task force. Um, I'm not sure what that means, uh, but, uh, defer to my colleagues. But I, I think that it, that a change is definitely needed at this point.
And if I could just say at this point that if that's the direction that we choose to move, that it might be good to, uh, provide as much of a framework for the way that we think we'd like to go in a general way, so that we can publicize that to, um, residents of the city, so that they know that there might be an opportunity for them if they like what we put forward and have some interest, that, uh, it might kind of broaden their sense of, uh, the possibilities for where the city might go and might pique their interest in, uh, serving on the Committee on the Environment or a, or whatever it is that we go forward with. Uh, and the other quick comment that I'd just like to make is that, um, I, I agree that there's a sense of frustration that the city used to be in more of a leadership position on, uh, going in various environmental directions, but I don't want to leave the impression that we haven't done anything in that direction. What I'm thinking about in particular is a lot of the, uh, stormwater projects the city has done. Uh, we highlighted those at the, uh, city's booth at the convention last week, uh, with some, some innovative stormwater projects going forward. We got, uh, some of the stimulus funding for, uh, one of those, and that we've, we've done a number of things in that area, I think, thanks to, uh, Public Works Department and the, uh, in particular, the city's engineer who has, uh, responsibility for stormwater. So that there are some things that we've been doing. It's just, we're not out there kind of leading on a number of big issues. But I think that the stormwater in particular is one that, uh, that, that's an area where, uh, that did come up at, at the session that I was at on the, uh, on thinking about where, uh, municipalities might need to be in the next few years, that there's a lot more, uh, regulations of a different kind that are going to be tightening up quite a bit on stormwater, uh, particularly around, uh, Chesapeake Bay. And, uh, that the city has been doing some things there and that we're, uh, working in a number of venues to, uh, to go in that direction. And that they were talking about, uh, what municipalities needed to do if they hadn't already done it, was transfer their, uh, their revenue generation for stormwater from their tax base to a fee-based system. And I thought to myself, yes, and Tacoma Park was the first one to do that in the state, so.
If I may just follow up, Mayor?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I'm disappointed, uh, that the Committee on the Environment and some of the members aren't here tonight. I don't know whether we, you know, notified them that we were to be having this discussion or invited them here, but, uh, I hope we do as we move forward, uh, with the future plans, because it's important. You know, they've been very involved. Me and Catherine Tunis, especially as the chair, have been very involved in the, uh, environmental issues in the city for many, many years and a, a real contributor, uh, to the work in the city. And it would be, uh, totally improper not to have her here and, and as part of the discussion and making the plans for the future.
Councilmember Wright?
I realize that many aspects of, uh, environmental policy are interconnected, and I thank the mayor for pointing out the many things that we have continued to do. And I think we still are a leader in stormwater management and our tree ordinance and tree purchase program. We were talking to, uh, I was with Ruben and we stopped to talk to someone from Montgomery County, and they talked about this tree purchase plan where they, they have a way that they rebate people two hundred and fifty dollars to buy a tree. And I think in two years that the program's been in place, like three people have bought a tree. And I compare that to our unsubsidized tree purchase program where there, I don't remember, in the last cycle, how many trees were purchased. It's probably in the...
Thirty-eight one time. The second time was a little less and then I think it was twenty-two.
Yeah, I was thinking of twenty, so.
And we went out three, three cycles.
You know, the, the tree purchase program, a very healthy urban forestry, um, program, I think, with the combination of our efforts in stormwater management and friends of Sligo Creek, we are, you know, we have a, a structure and a way to attack the problem around stormwater management. Yes, we could be doing more properly, we, but, but if we decide we want to do more, we can do that relatively quickly, because I think we have a structure and a way to approach it. The place I think we're really lacking, um, and we have fallen behind is, is, has to do with really climate, issues related to climate change and greenhouse gas emissions. So from, from my, from my perspective, if we were to create something that's going to take the, take the role or take over for the community, uh, the, the Community on the Environment, to me, it should be focused on greenhouse gas emissions. Um, I feel like we don't really have a good structure within the city to figure out how to make the, not only the city government, but the entire city- to make the, not only the city government, but the entire city meet the plans for the future at the county and the state and the federal level. And I would say we could be even more aggressive than that. We can beat those measures. And this is the issue of our time, and it's, the implications for not correcting it are so drastic. I realize that if just Tacoma Park does it, we won't solve the problem, but I feel like we need to be a leader in that area. So I would be most interested in, I don't know if we call it a task force or what, but their main charge would be around climate change and greenhouse gas emissions. And I share some frustration with the Committee on the Environment, but I think some of that also comes from us, that we didn't, they've thrown a lot of things out there, but we haven't, as a council, given them more direction. But I also think for whatever reason, there's been a unwillingness by other members of the community to get engaged in the committee. Maybe some of that's because there wasn't this feeling of direction or really a way to contribute. So that's my two cents.
Councilmember Clay.
Okay. I'm not sure how we ended up with this on the agenda, if we're going to take all of the different elements of the strategic plan or if somebody wanted to put this on, but we're starting with this one. I think that's great. When I came onto the council, I remember talking to the planning department about a green building conference that I had done, and the planning department thought that was interesting. And I came in one day and they had put together a green building conference. I said, oh, this is a great idea. But of course, I had just talked about something that I had done. And then they went out and they did all this work, and they put everything together, and they generously gave me credit for it, even though it had really very little to do with it. One of the fun things about being a council member. So that's this great conference, and it was very focused on the building industry, which I thought was great. And it was very much about what I didn't want to work with at Swaxon Island, brought all the building industry people together, brought people from the community together. And a lot of people thought it was really interesting, but it was maybe a little bit farther than they were willing to go at that point. And there wasn't a lot about some of the maybe more basic things that people could do and some other demonstration projects. And since then, one of the interesting things that's happened is that Friends of Sligo Creek has been doing a project for rain gardens in a couple of different communities. Talked about things like purchasing plants together so they can get discounts on the plants, having the city store them at Public Works so they had a pool of plants, sand, and some of the other things that you need to do to build the rain gardens, and working together as a city and using the city's resources to leverage sort of economies of scale in the purchasing and also having people share labor and work together to build these rain gardens. And I think that there's a couple of good examples of kind of the scale of different things that we can think about and think about how we're approaching our community. So when we're thinking about the environment, we have kind of our broad-scale things that we can do. We have people who are really willing to make big changes in the environment, and we have people who are looking for smaller-scale changes. We have citywide scale, and then we have sort of at the house and then the personal use scale. And so when I think about some of these things, a couple of other ideas came out. When we were developing the strategic plan, one of the things I suggested was that we kick out some things to a new committee on sustainability, but people weren't quite willing to commit to that yet because we had the Committee on the Environment, and we wanted to talk about how this was different than from the Committee on the Environment. And I think that's one of the unanswered questions that we have here is what's the difference between the sustainability issue and the Committee on the Environment? And we ended up defining the sustainability issue as larger than just the environment and being all about green and also about economic sustainability. But it comes back down to it, we really got, I think, two different things that we need to look at. And I think we probably need to separate out some of the economic sustainability issues from our other green sustainability issues and come up with, I think what we need is a transition task force essentially that will evolve into a committee. And I think we should give them a relatively short timeframe and come back and look at the things that we are, you know, we already had a lot of this conversation and exists in the strategic plan. One of the strategies or one of the projects is to review the existing policies and develop new policies that advance the city council's environmental sustainability goals, develop in partnership with the community, the Committee on the Environment, Friends of Sligo Creek, and others, programming for the city council consideration, coordinate the timing of the recommendations with the city's budget development process. And at the same time, we have these two five-year capital improvement plans that we want to develop. So, you know, I really think what we need to do is put together a short-range task force to do, pick off a couple of these pet projects this year, in particular, the one, I think we should get started reviewing the policies essentially. We could do a policy review and probably kick out to our community indicators project and see if they could provide some assistance on this project for developing the benchmarks and key indicators for the environmental sustainability. Maybe, I don't know if they're going to have an environmental group yet because I know they're doing healthcare yet, but we might have them work with the task force that we put together for the sustainability pieces. And at this point, I think I would have them work on the broader community issues and really focus in on that and not as much maybe on what the individuals are doing or even what the city's doing, but come up with a task force and have them start with these policies and broad community issues. Separate out from that is the issue where we have all of these assumptions of an economically sustainable community. And I think we should spin this off into another discussion as a kind of like a, not a TAZD too, but, you know, a lot of the conversation that occurred around the Tax and Services Duplication Initiative led into these conversations about, you know, what do you do in the long term to create a more economically stable community? And I think maybe we should take the people who are really interested in that part of the dynamic and move that out into a separate discussion then that also looks at those other issues, the kind of where do we go from here after tax and services duplication and other things that we could do. And then finally, we also talked about having a green coordinator, which we decided not to fund this year because we didn't really have the political will or the funds or some combination of those two things to do that at this time. But we did talk about assigning someone within the city to take on those jobs. And I can't remember, the city manager wanted that to be out of her office or out of Public Works, but what I would do is figure out how that's going to work this year and start with a look at what's happening in this, just within the, just with the city operations itself. So we don't start with our green coordinator activity, trying to coordinate all these task forces and, you know, other activities and the new green building conference, but just the things that the city does. I get a stack of paper again tonight, this big, that I immediately looked at, just took a cursory look at the stuff, and I dumped it right over there in the recycling bin. As an example, you know, I would be happy to get rid of this paper and have you put up a secure website where I could review the stuff online and I could bring my laptop and have it here while I'm here, and I, you know, I wouldn't print it out. I don't have a working printer at home, which keeps me from printing anything that I don't really need. So there's no superfluous printing going on at my house. I mean, in some, you know, just get started with that kind of stuff. And we need to start with some of these things. And so I think if we started with that kind of thing here at the city and get this sustainability task force together to figure out how we're going to incorporate the kinds of things that the Committee on the Environment does, like, you know, Catherine Tunis has been really working very hard on the mercury switch stuff and other legislation. The Committee on the Environment's done a lot of proactive stuff like that at the state level, and we've had our planning department, you know, put together the green building part, Public Works Department does a ton of things that are green-related. And so maybe the first thing for our task force to do would be to identify who these players are, how they work together, and what would a structure look like that most effectively utilized and coordinated all these things so that we could bring some of these people back to the table who have tried some component of this committee or that, but, you know, what they wanted to do didn't really fit in. This would be an opportunity for their voice to be heard. So those are my thoughts.
Any other comments? Yes. That's my way to the floor.
I was not here for all of the strategic plan discussions, so I'm not going to comment on that.
And you follow it after the news you were doing?
Every night, I watched you like this. But in reading the materials tonight and in playing on something Councilmember Wright said about issues being interrelated, I think we have to also acknowledge that there's some tension between some of these goals and that they're all good goals, but in, you know, in negotiating two goods, you have to make some compromises. And I'll just lay out a couple of things here. One is the desirability of bike paths, but some of the easiest right-of-ways we have are along creeks in park and planning, and it requires a sizable number of trees to come down. This was a big discussion before the Sligo Creek bike path went in, and there were, you know, discussions down to the individual tree to try and save as many trees as possible when the bike path went through. But in the ensuing four to five years after the path was in, Park and Planning came and cut down most of those trees, cut down another hundred trees in there. And for example, as you look at the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan, there was a comment which Friends of Sligo is trying very hard to get out of there right now about the desirability of a bike path or a hyperbiker trail along Long Branch Creek. Friends of Sligo is opposed. It'd be, in a sense, it'd be great to have a path, but that stream valley is so narrow, you would take out every tree in there in order to get the kind of path that MNC PVC requires. So there's conflicts on these things, on what part we're going to have. Another thing I've noticed in my extensive conversations with the CDA is that our plans call for ADA-compliant sidewalks, and it talks here about increasing our square footage of ADA-compliant sidewalks. Certainly, major streets like Carroll and Flower in New Hampshire certainly need to have ADA compliance, but when you get into neighborhoods, particularly neighborhoods dating back to early 20th century, I don't think we have enough right-of-way to do it. I'm not sure ADA, a five-foot-wide sidewalk is necessary or desirable on neighborhood streets when you think about how many more square feet of impermeable surface you're putting in and the reality being that ADA compliance means two wheelchairs can pass each other at the same time and that that's going to be a pretty rare occurrence on a lot of the smaller side streets in Tacoma Park. So I see a need to look at balancing these things and realizing that, you know, we can't do both sometimes. And I don't see that necessarily in a very broad list of goals. I've already picking out a few things and wondering, well, how is this going to work? And I don't know how the Committee on the Environment or the council deals with those things. The third would be Old Town Tacoma Development, which of course is very transit-friendly, but we've had years and years of arguments about people not wanting more growth and at the same time bemoaning the, you know, very survivability of our Old Town businesses. And it's a struggle to reach a compromise on all of these things.
Councilmember Wright.
Boy, this is great. Good old discussion happening right now. And I like that transition or sustainability task force that Councilmember Clay suggested. And I think if we can find a way to put the indicators project in there. And the other thing that I didn't mention, I have mentioned in the past about the Ickley Conference, which was my little watershed event there, as they say, was the notion that in Broward County, they're trying to put everybody in a municipality. And Broward County, Florida, you maybe didn't hear this, but I think we're all proponents of efficiencies at the city level. And so I would, I think we should also do a good job of cataloging what we do and what we can do and what we will do from a sustainability, whether it's economic or environmental. From that perspective, as regards contrasting what we do and how we do it with the county, and one of you alluded to that about the tree purchase and so forth. I think we can get a lot more things done at our city level, and I think we ought to make as big a deal of it as we can in this effort. And that would be in part a goal, showing, a goal for us so that we can get that edge back. And that edge, you know, the recycling efforts were great, and we were in the forefront. And it's good that the county's caught up, but there are a lot of other things that I think we're, as noted, that we do well or we could do well, and that we don't take credit for ourselves. So I think that, I'd like to see that be a part of this thinking as we work toward a task force.
Councilmember Wright.
Just two follow-up things to Colleen's point. I definitely think we need to put it into manageable bite-sized segments for whoever we're tasking with this. So I like the idea of separating the, although they are interconnected, but the financial sustainability, for example, from the environmental sustainability in asking people. And then the other thing that just came to mind when Colleen was talking about the green building conference that happened, since that conference has happened, I think there's been a whole set of tax credits that have now come online for people who do environmental and weatherization improvements to their individual homes. And so things like that could really jumpstart getting people who maybe before weren't willing to take as aggressive an approach because economically it makes sense, those things may now make sense in a lower education, structured way like a, what a green building conference would be helpful.
Do the tax credits existed before, but they've changed in their nature and the amount of funding is available and some of the mechanisms are changed?
And a thought I had, as Councilmember Clay was talking before, was when you were talking about the paper generation, I also thought about a couple of initiatives that the Council of Governments has taken to be greener in terms of particularly paper use and changed how they did issuance of packet items and also changed things like their paper cups. They went to, I don't remember what they're, I want to call them ecotainers, but it was, you know, kind of different material for the cups and particular ways that they go about dealing with food items for any events or just any number of ways that they've come up with trying to be a greener organization and a greener operation. And that one of the things that might be a fairly simple task for either, you know, some internal process, some staff, would be to come up with recommendations for ways to reduce our footprint in terms of paper in its many manifestations. I know that my, I can feel my age when I think about, I'm gradually feeling encroached upon by laptops on the dais coming this way, and it's like, I'm probably the only one who hasn't put one up here?
I haven't put one up here.
You haven't? Well, you're the type who would.
I know, and I might be next to it. Trust in my mind.
And I think about trying to operate, running a meeting off of a screen, and it's like, I'm used to operating with paper and I can shuffle it quickly, and I'm not trying to scroll through pages and stuff. But on the other hand, I'm sure there are ways that I could manage what I need to do and have less paper. I'm one of the few who still comes in and picks up a packet to read for the meeting as opposed to reading it online. And I know we generally have, we try to put paper copies over in the rack for the public to access, but it may be that we publicize that we're going to be doing that less, that people can access it online, that we'll, you know, we'll try reducing. I would imagine that the clerk has a fairly good grasp of how many copies actually get used and proceeds accordingly, because who wants to print paper and pick it up and throw it away? But if we, if we came up with an approach for the city's use of paper generation, I just hearken back to computers were going to make us the paperless society and all it can does generate more paper. So I think having a task force with some kind of discussions of environmental sustainability is a good thing to do, and I like the suggestion of trying to tie in the indicators project. You weren't here, Councilmember Clay. I don't think the last meeting... You were here, Councilmember Clay, I don't think, last meeting when there was some, there was some, there was some discussion about the indicators project, and there was a fairly close vote to go ahead and authorize the expenditures that we had put into the budget. And there were professions by people who were supportive saying, but, you know, there have to be certain things that are generated with this through this year to make it applicable specifically to the city. And I think that's one way that that project could give us something even more valuable. So I like that suggestion, and I think we can have that that environmental sustainability focus of a group, and we can also potentially have city staff and maybe some recommendations from that group or a subgroup with some specific actions that we can take in a relatively short timeframe to be more environmentally friendly in our operations.
Just aside, when I was in San Francisco, one of the things that we had at the service project that we did at Bret Hart Elementary School was we had compostable forks and cups and plates, and then they had Target sponsor a big party, and Shaka Khan came and performed. It was totally cool conference, best conference I've ever been to. And they also had all, everything that they served was compostable, not just recyclable, but compostable. And then they had the separate trash bins set out while they were teaching people how to properly compost or recycle or trash.
And I just had the thought that we might potentially coordinate with the Young Activist Club on various things that we could do, because I'm sure they have some good ideas. They've been doing a lot of research on their, on their trays. They've been needing some resistance at the county level, but that's another area where we could get our younger residents involved in coming up with ideas.
Maybe they could get, if they do the the plastic trays, they might get Tacoma Park Elementary School to do, experiment with the compostable ones. Schools can have compost on their project outside.
So do we have some consensus about where we want to go from here so that staff has some direction on any possible things that staff might need to do to help us move this forward? Councilmember Wright?
I just wanted to clarify, maybe staff would need clarification, but I sort of like, I need a clarification about the task force idea and whether it's going to be more narrowly defined around the environment to start with or more broadly defined around sustainability. And then they would, they would make suggestions, I guess, the way you were saying, right? And then out of that, like, um, a task force on the environment, a task force on the sustainability, I just wasn't sure which of the two we were talking about.
My, my sense was, what I was hearing was that for, for the purposes of this discussion, we wanted to focus on the environmental sustainability and to deal with that piece of the strategic plan and some of those assumptions, strategies and initiatives, and form a task force around that, dealing later with the environmental sustainability, with the economic sustainability piece. Am I correct in that? In what I heard?
That was kind of what I heard. And that that task force would come back to us not only with ideas of projects that we should be addressing, but also on organizational recommendations, whether it be then to reinitiate the, you know, take the Committee on the Environment out of suspense, or whether there be other organizational strategy to use in place of what we have today.
And I was just thinking about timeline for any of this and thinking about the fact that we're now into summer, so it's hard to kind of get the word out. A lot of people aren't around, and we're going to go on break in August. My sense is that this might be something that we could publicize in September and try and get a group together on a fairly short timeframe and have recommendations back from that group by no later than January, just thinking off the top of my head.
I think, you know, it's important for people to to realize, and when we talk about suspending the Committee on the Environment, it's not saying that the Committee on the Environment hasn't done well, it's saying that we want to take a step back, start with a clear piece of paper on, maybe I shouldn't have said that, maybe start with a clear computer screen and and think about what we want to do and how we want to approach it. I certainly expect the people that are currently on the Committee on the Environment to be actively, active participants in this task force as we move forward.
And if the clerk can remind us whether we had some applicants who we named or we had some applicants who we didn't name because we were going to have this discussion, where are we on committee applicants?
There was at least one applicant that was on hold. Right. And so it, so is what I'm hearing that, would you like staff to come back with a suggestion for how the task force would be put together and do you want us to come back with something that you can react to?
I think a resolution, a draft resolution for a task force. And a probably a second resolution to, are we talking about suspending the Committee on the Environment or?
I don't think we need, I don't think we need a formal action to do that. I think that's, we're just.
As a direction.
Yeah.
Okay. So just a draft resolution for a task force.
With with maybe some, if anybody, if if staff has any initial, something that you want to get out to us, and then that council members can react to that, to flush it out a little bit, to make sure that we're taking into account either something that somebody feels is important or something that we didn't think about tonight, so that we have something ready to go in a September newsletter?
If we're moving that quick, it might be helpful for Councilmember Robinson and and Councilmember Clay specifically, but all of us to interact with Jesse and give her some.
Yeah, I mean, it's possible we could put something together before the break so that it's ready to go.
That would, that would be wonderful.
At the end of session, so that in September, it could be ready to start up.
Okay.
That's a good timeline. And I, just to back to TASD for one second, I found it very helpful when council asked TASD to come up with a report within a certain timeframe. I think we had six months. It was a little daunting that when there were 21-plus people and a couple of staff, we didn't know quite what we were going to do, but we were able to break down the task and knowing that it was, that there was an end and that we were supposed to report something.
We wanted these word November 15.
It made it, it made it something we could pull off. And there was good energy in that, in that group, so.
That's why I said January.
So that model worked for me anyway.
We want task oriented people.
Task oriented. And I know, actually, and I, I have a constituent who would be very good also, who's, who, when I put out an email talking about a task force of some sort, approached me and said, count me in on that. So I have somebody who I know would be, who would be good.
Is there anything else, any other comments? Council wants to make any questions, staff has on clarifying any direction? Thank you. We're joined.